And not just with the criminal justice system, which needs structural change, but because of COVID-19, we've seen disparities in our health system where black people and brown people are dying at higher rates. We have an economic system that is not fair to people of color. We have a banking system that we have an opportunity to change to ensure that everybody has an opportunity to go as far as their imaginations and their abilities will take them. So I believe that the action that we take today is the start of changing this world. So to the city staff, I just want to say that this is not a request for you to report back. This is an instruction for you to do this. I am excited to maybe create a world so that my kids and grandkids can live in that is better than the world that I have lived in for over 60 years. So let's do this, and I think the appropriate way for us to start off is let's do a public comment. I want to say to the people that are on the line, it looks like it's more of you than we're going to have time for because council starts at 10:00. But I want to hear from as many as you as possible and as this process proceeds and when this committee goes out into the community asking for ideas and feedback, I want you to know that your suggestions are unbelievably welcome. So with that said, let's begin our public comment.
Caller, please state your-
Good morning. My name is Angela Chung. I'm an attorney and independent research consultant. I do a lot of policy work. I'm also a former public defender. I'm also a former legal aid worker that ran an emergency response for sex trafficked youth and adults. And coming from that perspective, having worked in various areas of the county and the city, I am writing or I am calling in to discuss motion one and some of the other items in here regarding police reform. As to item number one and the 911 calls that are happening around the city, I'm pleased that there is action and movement in this. The one thing that I would offer to the committee as they consider implementation for this is to work with various community organizations and models throughout the country who have already implemented this, including cahoots, the original one in Oregon. And I'm happy to share that resource. Also, I think one of the things that I have concern around is when we're going to spend a lot of money on asking the people who committed harm to investigate themselves. And so I think when you, I think it was one of the agenda items, I'm sorry if this escapes me, but I think that when we look at these efforts and we see that they don't produce any results or any accountability for the community, I think the only thing that we can do is really begin to limit police contact with the public, and that means defunding and investing in communities more than the already 150 million that's been discussed and allocated. Thank you for the time, and I look forward to hearing what the implementation will be.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Next.
Caller, please state your name and the items you want to speak on.
Hi, my name is Amy, and I'd like to speak on item one and provide general public comment.
You have one minute.
Okay, for item one, I want to see alternatives to policing and robust community engagement in developing them. Fund social workers and social work training for peace officers, not police officers. Police shouldn't be dispatched as mental health providers, youth workers, EMTs, or housing services. Nonviolent calls should go to experts in the appropriate field. There are many community organizations that have been working on this for years. You should be working with the communities instead of criminalizing them. I again demand that you adopt the people's budget as part of that. For general public comments, I wanted to thank council member Bonin for standing up for the people against Chief Moore earlier this week. We've had enough of police brutality. LAPD's job is supposed to protect and serve, and they're failing at both. I demand that you take that money and put it to things that will actually solve drug addiction, homelessness, and other crises in our city. Using police to deal with our major issues have clearly not worked and are a waste of our tax dollars. We need to invest in cars, not cops. Thanks, and I yield my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Andrew, let's roll it.
Caller, please state your name and then items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name's Laura Addery. I'd like to speak on item one and make a general public comment.
You have one minute.
For item one, yeah, I agree with other callers, and thank you to head council member for agreeing that this is the time for LA to make history and for us to be on the right side of that history and get things going. So I really appreciate the support and ability to reimagine. For item one, we really do need to see alternatives to policing, and as other callers highlighted, having the community have input into what the community needs just makes practical sense in terms of developing and supporting those alternatives that already exist. I think we need to completely reimagine public safety, so the cuts to the police budget are great, but we need to continue on and completely defund those areas that are taking our tax dollars and spending them towards violence, particularly against our black community members. The needs and the priorities of the community should be kind of the direct first line, and the people's budget will reflect that, so it's already kind of done the work for you. I think in general, we just need to defund the police, so supporting and passing the people's budget overall is the best course of action at this point, and thank you for your support and your time.
Thank you. I thank you. That's your time. Next speaker.
Speaker, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on. Speaker, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hello? Hi, my name is Liam Fitzpatrick. I'm a community organizer, and I want to speak on item one and give a general public comment.
You have one minute.
Excellent. I am hugely in favor of this motion as a way to move policing away from people who have guns and to people who are trained to do the jobs that they need to do. However, I would like to point out that in the initial motion, there is a little bit of confusion between nonviolent and noncriminal, which I think needs to be addressed. Nonviolent action and a noncriminal action, as I'm sure we're all aware, are very, very different. In the city of LA, speaking on the street can be a criminal action, right? There are any number of weird city ordinances and laws that are sold in books that are technically still criminal actions. Like, you can't bathe two babies in the same tub at the same time. You can't hunt mox under a streetlight. It's technically illegal to cry on the witness stand. These could all be criminal actions that could have an armed officer respond. Also, zoot suits are still illegal as a result of the 1943 riots that took place around the same time of year, from June 2nd to June 8th.
Caller, your time has expired.
The next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Marley. I am a resident of District 13. I'm calling in to speak on item number one. I'm calling in to voice my full support for this item and call for a transparent public process with full community input. You really need to be working with community leaders like BLM LA and similar groups who are already well-versed in nonviolent alternatives to policing. It's not a new idea. There's a wealth of information out there on this topic, and we need to consult it thoroughly to create a new mechanism for public safety, because by reducing interactions with police, we can save lives. And I really appreciate the previous caller for speaking to the subject of criminality, which is also a huge issue here. But you know, Sandra Bland failed to signal when switching lanes. George Floyd supposedly used a counterfeit bill. Eric Garner was supposedly selling loose cigarettes. Armed and persistently violent police did not need to respond to these problems, especially police who believe it is their right to exercise violence whenever they see fit and know there will be no repercussions. So reducing interactions with police in general will go a long way. But I want to close by saying that we know this will not go far enough, because we will still have the corrupt and violent and racist and frankly uncontrollable LAPD patrolling our streets with military gear and the belief that they're at war with the public. So I just also want to end urging you to adopt the people's budget. Thank you.
Next caller.
Caller, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, my name is Adam Smith, and I'd like to speak on 1, 3, 4, 6, and general public comment.
You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Wesson and crew. I do think Nury should kick John Lee off of the Police Reform Committee before he gets indicted.
Okay, let's just speak to that item, man.
Gotcha. Right, sorry. I appreciate motion one and am cautiously wary about the wording around assistance from the LAPD. I think that in the creation of unarmed models of crisis response, it would be better suited to reject any influence of the LAPD and instead rely on community organizations that have been creating and truly embodying alternatives to policing in terms of crisis response. I was in the room last year, Mr. Wesson, when you rightfully gave credit to Pete White and Los Angeles Community Action Network for all the work they do in Skid Row and in South Central. And I think these are the groups that should be influencing the crisis response model, not the LAPD. I mean, you have LASSA on here. They also work with the LAPD. The Department of Mental Health has members on LAPD outreach teams that obviously still end up killing people. And on the three and four, I think that we've seen, we know what body cams do and don't do. They certainly don't provide any type of accountability. It's more of this veneer of transparency when it's actually giving more money and contracts to the LAPD. We know that the LAPD body cam videos record up to over 20,000 hours per week, and so any amount that might get released through some doctored video from Josh Rubenstein doesn't account for the fact that it's just another piece of, you know, the over-expansion of these-
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, man. Thank you. Let's go to the next speaker.
Caller, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yes, my name is Carrie, and I'd like to speak on agenda item one and general public comment.
You have one minute.
I just want to say that, like all the other callers, I support the motion to have a model where, you know, we don't have police officers responding to nonviolent crimes. People who are having mental health crises, for example, need care and not an armed response that will traumatize them further. I am also urging that the community be involved in discussions of what, you know, these alternatives will be. We know best what we need, and though I acknowledge, you know, the good intentions in this motion, it's only the first step, and I'm calling on the council to be brave enough to go further. We must ultimately defund the police and adopt the people's budget, LA, to divert that money into resources that prioritize care for the community. Lastly, John Lee, as a fellow Asian American, I am especially calling on you to do what is right. So, you know, just so you know, you don't represent all of us until you do what we are asking for, and we're asking for you to do what is right.
Thank you. All right, let's go to the next speaker. Next speaker, please.
Caller, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, so this is Pete White, the Los Angeles Community Action Network. So last week, in protest of the global call to defund the police, the LAPD refused to work 700 transit ships, and Los Angeles remained intact. Their protests worked against them and that we now know at least 700 positions that can be removed and those resources invested in real community-based alternatives. On the day we filed our lawsuit against the LAPD for its treatment of protesters, 10 SUVs showed up at our weekly COVID-19 testing and food giveaway and said it was because of a noise complaint and attempted to disrupt real community response to a deadly crisis. That's 20 additional officers we don't need. While number one, item one, is well-intentioned, the motion begins a process of study, analyze, study more, report back, revise, public hearing, revise, the government strategy that we're all too familiar with. It includes the LAPD in making decisions on how to deal with the LAPD. If you want us to participate in this game of whack-a-mole, the price tag is much higher than 150 million, and we'll start by listing the immediate demands. One, extend expensive training and studies geared toward exonerating the culture of racist policing that fuels the LAPD. Two, end the citywide community safety partnership program and its buying of support from community-based organizations, assets, and influencers. Stop hiring more police-
That's your time, Mr. White. Good to hear your voice. Next speaker.
Speaker, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Christiana Cobb Dozier, and I'd like to speak on item one and give a general public comment.
You have one-
I want to echo the other callers who've been calling on city council to support the Wesson Martinez Harris Dawson motion to reimagine public safety and alternatives to policing with police no longer being dispatched for nonviolent calls. And also, I like the idea of looking into instead of nonviolent, noncriminalized calls, because I think that's really important. We should instead have mental health workers, youth workers, EMTs, and housing services respond to these, because they're specifically trained to do so. This is just a start, and ultimately, the calls won't stop to defund the police and adopt the people's budget until we adopt the people's budget and move forward with the community members who've already been at work with these matters. We've discussed this for weeks now, and they've been doing this work for years. So I suggest that the city council really heed their suggestions and go forward instead of trying to figure out a way around it. I believe this is a start, but I'd need us to be fearless in doing so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Caller, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Jake Nachman. I'd like to speak, give a general public comment on item one.
You have one minute.
I, oh, I, to the members of this committee, I along with many of my fellow Angelinos, demand the defunding of our police with the ultimate goal of abolition of the LAPD and a community-led development to alternatives to public safety. I implore you to implement a system that is based on community policing with mental health services, homeless services, and emergency services provided by experts within our communities, not police officers who are untrained and unneeded in those circumstances. We need a system developed and built from the ground up with the support of our most vulnerable communities within the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Speaker, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Daniel. I'd speak on item one.
You have one minute.
Great, thanks. I'm not sure how anyone could watch the hundreds of video clips from the past few weeks of LAPD officers violently beating, pepper spraying peaceful protesters and think that these public servants are capable of or have any real interest in de-escalation. In fact, it would seem as though needless aggression is their go-to response, and this is when they knew the cell phone cameras and eyes of the world were on them. Imagine what happens when this is not the case. Body cameras conveniently malfunction. When all you have is a hammer, everything looks like a nail. Violence against the most vulnerable in our communities is too often the first resort instead of the last. Situations that don't necessitate an armed response should not receive an armed response. But real decisive action is needed. I hope we all share the goal of having fewer citizens needlessly shot and abused. Step one is having fewer situations where this outcome is even a possibility. The people are fed up. It's pretty simple. Adopt the people's budget and defund the police, or you will get voted out. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Speaker, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Julia Slater, and I would like to speak on item one and give general public comment. Good morning. I wanted to thank you for your time, and I also wanted to urge you to adopt the people's budget and defund the police. I want to echo that last week, 700 metro patrol officers did not call in and we simply didn't notice. Everything was fine. I would like these budgets to reflect a community-led budget in that we need community housing, we need more school counselors, we need more EMTs, trained mental health specialists, and trained substance abuse counselors. Let's get back to the basics and provide people with shelter, food, and water. This is not good enough. We need to defund the police. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker, please.
Speaker, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name's Maggie, and I'd like to speak on item one as well as general public comment.
You have one-
Just like everybody else, regarding item one, I'd like to also see whether to pass this motion as the first of many reforms that will provide alternatives to policing and increase community investment and engagement in LA. I really appreciate the trespassing statements that this body decides to be a part of history. Honestly, history has already happened. The way forward is to defund the police, and we're already seeing this all around our country. I also want to encourage you all to invest in the work that is already being done by community leaders like BLM and LA CAN, as well as the community members themselves. And when I say community members, I mean those who are most disproportionately affected by police violence, including, of course, black folks, brown communities, the unhoused, sex workers, and the disabled. I also want to say that we need a budget that pays people for their expertise. So why we talk about calling in social workers or mental health professionals, they should be getting paid the same as cops. Cops are making ridiculous amounts of money off of overtime where they're just filling out paperwork.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Speaker, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hello, my name is Adam, and I'd like to give a general public comment on item one, please.
You have one minute.
Hey, so I'd just like to echo everybody else in that I really believe that, as you said, this is a step in the right direction. However, we do need to keep going forward even more, which I know you intend to do. I encourage you to continue to work with other coalitions that are led by Black Lives Matter of LA and even LA CAN, for example. And I think it's important that we defund the police, and when we actually say that, we actually mean it. Defund the police completely and continue to work on robust alternatives for whatever that may come to entail. And I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Speaker, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Yes, hello, my name is Sasha Ross. I would like to speak on item one and general comment.
You have one minute.
Like most callers, excuse me? Oh, um, yes, like most callers, I would just like to say that I support item one and rerouting nonviolent calls to the appropriate experts in their field. I would also like to say that we do not need a military men to protect the property values of billion-dollar developers. The citizens of Los Angeles are taking their city back, and I ask you to adopt the people's budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Speaker, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Forsythe. I would like to speak on item one and also give a general comment. Like everyone else has been saying, I'm strongly in support of item one, and I strongly urge the committee to adopt this item. We clearly need alternatives to policing. I think all of us have seen now very clearly just how broken the policing system is and how critical it is that we stop any kind of funding that further legitimizes their work, and it's very critical that we also reduce police contact with the public. So many of our vulnerable populations are being over-criminalized and traumatized by the police. These alternative models for safety, as, you know, indicated by this motion being introduced, exist and are really effective and are also, in terms of being able to actually help the individuals who are struggling with mental health crises, substance use, and homelessness. I think the very first caller mentioned cahoots in Eugene, Oregon. That model has existed for many years, and other cities across the US have also started adopting that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Sorry to cut you off, but thank you. Go ahead, Drew.
Speaker, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, my name is Zach Sherwin. I'd like to speak on items one, three, four, six, and give general public comment.
You have two minutes.
So with regard to item one, the first paragraph of the motion says we've gone from asking the police to be part of the solution to being the only solution, and it's now become clear that our expectations of the police need to iterate yet again such that they're no part of the solution because they don't exist in a recognizable form. Defund the police, and by that, you know, as people are saying, we mean abolish LAPD rather than reform them or find some new incarnation in which they can continue their operations and activities. So when I see that language in the motion about developing unarmed models of crisis response, quote, "with assistance from the LAPD," it feels like something other than the meaningful response that this moment demands. So don't get assistance from them. Defund them and invest that money in communities. With regards to items three and four, you know, I think that these body worn camera, the increase of body worn camera tech is just going to increase funding to LAPD. That's going to be the upshot, and it's going to expand their surveillance tech and training, and it's just not the direction the city needs to go in. And with regard to item six, I'm really concerned that this item asks Chief Moore and the LAPD to provide reports on the officer's behavior during the protest. The city has lost all trust in Chief Moore specifically and in the LAPD in general, and I think that that's just, you know, asking the bad guys to report on themselves here. And once again, it's not the response that this moment demands. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you.
Caller, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yes, this is Richie Sержenko from Sunrise Movement LA and the People's City Council. I would like to speak on items one, three, four, six, seven, and public comment, please.
You have two minutes.
Yeah, first thing I want to say, like, on the agenda, the meeting ID is actually incorrect. The agenda that you all put out, it says that the meeting ID number is 1605358466, but it's incorrect. Actually, to get into the meeting, the meeting ID is 1602379024. So, you know, you should probably put out correct information on the agenda. My next point, I think Nury should kick off John Lee from the Police Reform Committee since he's under investigation by the FBI.
Let's stay on the items.
Okay, I'm sorry, Herb. Yeah, the, you know, to item one, the language in the motion says to develop an unarmed model of crisis response that would divert nonviolent crime or nonviolent calls for services away from LAPD to appropriate non-law enforcement agencies. The only issue is, is that you all are seeking guidance from the LAPPL, and the LAPPL is ran by violent and dangerous people. Jamie McBride himself has shot multiple people. His daughter shot and killed Daniel Hernandez. So I don't really think those are the people that you should be getting advice from, the LAPPL. You know, they are dangerous and violent former police officers who have children who shoot and kill Angelinos. As far, you know, back to item number one, you know, police shouldn't be dispatched as mental health providers, youth workers, EMTs, or housing services. Nonviolent calls should go to experts in the appropriate field. And like, there are some concerns that people have with the motion because, you know, as someone pointed out earlier, sleeping on the sidewalk in Los Angeles is criminalized. You know, and this motion calls for social workers and non-law enforcement to respond to-
Thanks, Ricky. Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Caller, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hey, this is Jed Perry of the Street Watch LA. I want to speak on items one, three, and general public comment.
You have two minutes.
Right, and so as we sit amidst, again, a crisis that falls on your lap, council members of poverty and homelessness in the city that disproportionately affects black folks, you continue to spend billions of dollars on policing your way out of homelessness. We know what that looks like. It just adds to the problem. It just kills people, right? I'm someone who's on the ground every day, witnessing this, witnessing the harm that police cause. I feel like too many of us are spending all of our time on trying to reduce the harm of police violence upon people living in poverty, when we really should be using our time on harm reduction, on providing healthcare services and housing to folks. I actually once talked to a senior lead officer in Hollywood who said that eighty percent of his officer's radio calls were complaints about homeless encampments, quote-unquote "quality of life" complaints from housed people. Do you actually think that cops should be sent when someone complains that someone's using drugs? Is that, I'm sure some of you do. I'm sure John Lee thinks that, right? But we all know, and empirical data has shown, that is not the solution, right, to poverty. Police are the problem. We need to start investing in harm reduction. We cannot send eight cops to my friend Andrew Kettle, who died homeless last week, to surround his body. Where were the healthcare workers to save his life, right? This is killing people out there. And y'all need to start thinking really hard about this. We need to defund the police drastically. Drastically defund the police.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Speaker, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on. Speaker, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Morgan G. I'd like to speak on items one, six, seven, and give general comment, please.
You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. We should make it clear we want to see alternatives to policing. BLM L.A. did the work for you. They outlined exactly how we want to see it happen, how it's possible, and presented it to you guys. Police shouldn't be going to nonviolent calls period. There's rules already in place for that. If you can't teach cops empathy, how can you teach them basic medical care? You can't let the LAPD investigate themselves. Of course, they're going to say they're not guilty for crimes they've committed. It's been filmed. Cops can't even be charged for murdering people on video. I'm just amazed you'd let them investigate themselves. It's so biased. For my general comment, Weston, thank you for your sentiments. I truly hope we see some action from you that results in actual change. I want to make it clear, since it seems to be not for a lot of you, that we're seeing abolish the police, not public safety. Police don't keep a majority of the public safe. The system doesn't work, so we need to get rid of it and use a different one. I know you really don't care, or just genuinely think that you're correct to just overcome your own guilt. I don't think, I don't know what y'all think is going to happen if you don't do what we tell you to. Like, what will history say about you guys? Yeah, I yield my time. Fuck you.
Thank you.
Speaker, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hello, my name is Nicholas from District Four, and I'd like to speak on item one and give a general public comment.
Go ahead.
The police shouldn't be used as mental health workers, youth workers, EMTs, or housing services. All of these nonviolent calls should go to experts in the appropriate fields. The people's budget outlines what this could look like, and I urge your department to adopt it. The LAPD has consistently showed its inability to regulate itself. In the past eight years, over six hundred people have been killed by the LAPD with zero accountability. In the past months, the LAPD's violence against peaceful protesters has been despicable. In addition to excessive amount of rubber bullets and tear gas used, protesters were detained for over seven hours without being read the Miranda rights, without access to water or bathrooms, in tight quarters during this virus pandemic. We don't want police reform. We want the police defunded, abolished. The LAPD are without a doubt the most dangerous threat to our communities than anything else. I forfeit the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Speaker, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Sarah Zermern. I live in District Ten, and I'm just calling to speak on item one and general public comment. And actually, item three or four, whichever one, was about the LAPD investigating themselves in the wake of the event of the past few weeks. Having been at these events, I can see very, very quickly, it doesn't take much to realize, this is a culture problem. It's not an individual bad apple problem. So any sort of motion to have the LAPD investigate themselves should be eliminated and rethought, y'all. That's a bad idea. As for item one, definitely, I'm echoing everyone calling in to just encourage you to completely rethink the way you've been approaching this. If all of this is new to you somehow, just get on board, because everyone is watching. There's not going to be a point where everyone kind of goes away and forgets about this. From now on, everyone is watching you very, very closely. So this will not be watered down. This will not be forgotten. From here on out, it's going to be hard work. So y'all better be ready, because people are ready to help you do it. So just let them. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Speaker, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Lindsay. I want to speak on items one, eight, and make a general public comment.
You have two minutes.
Thank you. So first, I want to echo what other callers said regarding item eight. Having the LAPD investigate themselves is actually ridiculous. I don't know who thought that was a good idea. It's absolutely biased and will not end well. Regarding item one, I want to support this motion. We need trained experts and community organizers who are being paid. A concern I have is that what will end up still being considered violent, for instance, a spray can in the hands of a white kid is a nonviolent call that might require a youth worker, but a spray can in the hands of a black kid suddenly becomes a gun, and that becomes a violent call. I know that item two aims to address whether a call is racially motivated, but if we're currently trying to teach police how to have empathy, how are we supposed to trust that they can make that judgment on whether or not they have showed up to what turns out to be a nonviolent situation? This leads into my general public comment. Item one is a start, but we want the police abolished. We want this broken system that originated from slave catchers to be broken down and to build up a new public safety system. Black Lives Matter already reimagined this for you, so adopt the people's budget. We want action, and we want it now. You said this is an opportunity to make history, so please don't miss it. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you.
Caller, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hello?
Hello?
I hear you.
Okay, hi. I'd like to speak on item one and eight.
You have two minutes.
Thank you. Hi, so my name is Thetse. I'm speaking from District Four. First, I'd like to urge the council members to approve item number one. I tuned into yesterday's police commission, and there's clearly disconnect with the leadership in that department and what is being asked of them. So I'm asking for the council members today to recognize what the right thing to do is. When Black Lives Matter and community organizers ask to defund the police and to use the money to bolster public schools, more public housing, and improved healthcare, all of which you can find in the people's budget, Chief Moore and Assistant Chief Vermaelen instead asked for more training for police officers, including with the council to reject and be wary of any measures that involve more training or more equipment for police officers, because ultimately, that's going to result in more funding for the police. And this has historically proven very ineffective. That's right, item eight. There is clearly a massive conflict of interest having the LAPD report on their own actions. Mr. Weston, if you are as genuinely serious about ushering in a new era for Los Angeles, as you started at the start, as you sounded at the start of this call, then you will recognize that we need an independent investigation, and you will call for a resource outside of the LAPD to investigate the terrible ways that they have been treating peaceful protesters over the last month. Thank you, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Caller, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Katie Schaefer, calling in from Bonnens District. I'd like to speak on item eight and general public comment.
You have one minute.
Thank you. First of all, guys, get off your phones. It's rude. So item eight, the violence by the, like, having the LAPD investigate protesters for their own violence is ridiculous. It's something that the United States would sanction Venezuela for. And the fact that this is even an item that we have to beg you not to do tells everyone in this city what type of regime we're up against. Moving on to general public comment, you can't reform these monsters. If three billion dollars hasn't done it with enough training at this point, no amount of money is going to be able to. The issue isn't money or training. The issue is a violent and toxic culture that absolves cops from all the responsibility and treats them as though they're above the law while they terrorize our communities. We, just so we're abso-fucking-lutely clear, we do not want any of these services, these independent services for healthcare, et cetera, to run through the LAPD or an umbrella organization of the LAPD. We want independent civilian.
Thank you.
Caller, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, my name is Stevie. I'm a member of L.A. Tenants Union, calling to speak on items one, eight, and general public comment.
You have two minutes.
I support the motion proposed by Councilmember Weston and President Martinez. I want to echo the calls of what everyone else has said, that it's a start. We need to ultimately defund police. We need to reimagine what community safety can look like, including alternatives to policing, and we need Black Lives Matter, Build Power, and the communities who have been most impacted by LAPD's terrorism to be heavily involved in determining how those programs will be implemented. Regarding item eight, just echoing what everyone else has said, I myself was arrested earlier this month for protesting the murders of more than six hundred thousand, six hundred people by Los Angeles Police. I was held in zip ties on a closed air bus for nearly six hours during a pandemic. I was never read my rights. I was driven more than an hour away. LAPD is a terroristic force with no regard for the humanity of the people it claims to serve. It is the deadliest police force in the nation. We already are home to the largest jail system in the world. None of this helps our communities. We need care, not cops. We do not need LAPD to investigate itself. Regarding general public comment, as I've mentioned, and as so many others have mentioned, we need to defund police completely and invest in housing, in rent cancellation, in social services. I think we're all aware that L.A. has more people experiencing homelessness than any city in the nation, more than sixty-six thousand people, the majority of whom are people of color, and police routinely harass our unhoused neighbors. And now, half of Los Angeles is out of work. Nearly six hundred thousand Angelinos are facing eviction as a result of COVID, and the L.A. Tenants Union has seen that during this pandemic, it has been black and Latinx families almost exclusively that are facing eviction, and it is police who are there to enforce those evictions. It's estimated one hundred and twenty thousand more people will soon become homeless, and we know that LAPD are experts at terrorizing our unhoused.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Caller, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name's Ashley, and I'd like to speak on agenda item one.
You have one minute.
I'd just like to echo everybody else in saying that I appreciate Weston, Martinez, and Harris Dawson's motion, and encourage you to pass it as a step forward to defund the police. And I hope that you will all continue moving forward towards the people's budget and having the police be accountable to the people, not to themselves. Thank you.
Caller, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Zoe. I'd like to speak on items one, eight, and general public comment.
You have two minutes.
Okay, great. So I just, I'm really excited that you're passing item one. Thank each of the council member for your, like, browsing words at the beginning. I hope that we can move forward and, like, build a safer society. I just wanted to clarify some of the wording, because we need to confirm that these alternatives to policing exist outside of and are external to the police department, because as long as the police department has their hands in some way within these departments or programs, we will continue to see violence and crime, because it is oftentimes incited by the police, you know? Clarifying words on criminality, as other callers have said, I think would be really helpful. So yeah, I'm advocating for unarmed crisis response. For item eight, the police shouldn't be investigating themselves. They really shouldn't. I can't even believe this is a conversation that we have to have, but like, they should not investigate themselves. We need external investigators, because they will not investigate themselves. They do not want to let go of their money. They want to continue to just keep this conglomerate going. So we need to dismantle and abolish the police department and not allow them to investigate themselves. And then finally, general public comment, I would like to continue to defund the police department. And regarding the calling of the 911 phone number, you know, I think it's great that we're going to have a separate line for nonviolent calls or non, you know, that don't require police response, but it is important to keep 911 as a way for people to call, and then those calls get redirected, because some people don't know that they can call other phone numbers. So I think for the time being, in transition, the 911 phone number needs to be used.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Caller, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, hello, this is Jacob. You're to speak on item one, eight, and give public comment.
You have two minutes.
All right, cool. First, I want to say thank the cops who went on strike. All seven hundred showed we didn't need you, so let's see if we can make it two thousand this week. Also, this week, an off-duty cop tried to say someone put a tampon in their Starbucks, and after the investigation, the target was located, found no suspicious behavior. So I hope the target joins in the movement to defund the police, ensues the shit out of LAPD. If the cops aren't shooting protesters with rubber bullets or hitting people over the head with sticks, they're making up stories. There's no way we can trust these people to investigate who they're, or to help decide who their replacement is going to be. Yeah, defund the police. In regards to item one, we definitely need unarmed people responding to, responding to calls, work with neighborhood orgs. We've already put in the work, we've already identified what the solutions to be. Don't get input from the police. We know they can't be trusted. Yep, defund the police, adopt the people's budget. Yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Caller, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, hi, this is Hamid Khan from Stop LAPD Spying Coalition. I'd like to speak on item one, three, four, and six.
You have two minutes.
General comment.
You have two minutes.
Thank you. So while there's been a lot of noise made about the transfer of services from law enforcement agencies in nonviolent or calls, but I think, on the other hand, this whole citywide, the way the, 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 um, community safety partnerships are being laid out, it redirects the money back to law enforcement agencies. So I think that's a play of hand on the communities that communities don't want. And Community Safety Partnership has been known to have caused more harm. It creates mass surveillance of communities. It requires removal of green spaces. I don't know if folks have really read in depth as to what the expansion of community safety partnerships would mean in the communities. So, and then moving on to body cameras and all, I think one of the things that is missing from the conversation that this, this body needs to take immediate action on is the, is the massive architectural surveillance that already exists, where license plate readers, stingrays, digital receiver technologies, trapwire technologies, they already exist where they completely trace and track and monitor our movements constantly, and people have been, and there is documented facts now from the inspector general's own addicts which show massive levels of racial profiling. The iWatch See Something, Say Something program is licensed to racially profile. So as we are speaking about reforming the police, as we are speaking about defunding the police, as we are speaking about abolition of policing, the real tools of harm are still in place. And we have been reaching out to the police commission. There's been falling on deaf ears, so this body needs to take a very serious look at these massive architectures of surveillance and Stop LAPD Spying Coalition and Los Angeles Community Action Network. And BLM have been working together in identifying these tools of harm, and they have to be removed. So whether you're driving your car, whether you're sitting out.
Thank you very much. And we'll probably take another two or three public comments before we get into the actual meeting. Go ahead, Andrew.
Speaker, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Kelly Duce, and I would like to speak on item one, and I forgot the. And I forgot the item that is about, uh, police investigating themselves.
You have two minutes.
Thank you. Um, so essentially, I just think that, uh, any steps towards not having police, uh, responding, and as others have iterated before, um, not contacting with the public are steps in the right direction. I think the overall move is to abolish the police. Um, they are the source of great harm in our community. And I also think that the fact that they were ever deployed as a response to mental health emergencies, um, and homelessness is a crime in itself. Um, I think that the money needs to be repurposed effectively to give housing to homeless. I know that there are programs currently in place that are coronavirus emergency response to house the homeless in hotels that are not even working to house even ten percent of our current homeless population. Um, I really think that also in light of NYPD just investigating itself, uh, running over protesters and clearing itself of all wrongdoing is really a great metaphor for how policing, uh, is going to work in terms of investigating itself. It's a joke, um, and I really don't think that that should ever be considered as an effective way, um, especially in the face of a movement that's, uh, going towards exposing the corruption in the power of police forces in major metropolitan areas across the US. Um, thank you for your time. Thank you for calling this meeting at eight AM. Uh, it was great. Bye.
Thank you.
Caller, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
My name is Susan Hunter. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, no organizations, and I'm speaking on items one, four, eight, and general public comment.
You have two minutes.
Thank you. Uh, if we're going to actually talk about real reforms, this is not the process to do it. Bum rushing people to comment at eight o'clock in the morning before a city council meeting is not real reform. There's no reason why we can't set up a community and safety element under our general plan with the working group that I would like to be a part of because we have much bigger problems and much bigger issues than just police violence. For eight years, my rape kit has sat unanswered. Police are not utilized to prosecute rapists, pedophiles, or murderers. And if we want to talk real reforms, then cancel programs like Vision Zero and start requiring prosecution-based results on rape, child molestation, and murder because they can't all be the fault of the victim or suicides. We need an independent citizen chosen and led committee that has oversight into internal affairs. If there's no wrongdoing, then the police and city hall have nothing to be afraid of. Stop using police as a way around fair taxation laws to get more money for the city. Start sending every single person who has endured a rape kit collection, a letter that says the truth about the processing of their kit instead of expecting survivors to demand it. No more of these token gestures because it's not real. We don't get to claim that we've done something when we haven't done the work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Caller, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Uh, I'd like to make, my name is Monisha Parker. Uh, I'd like to make a general public comment. I'm in district, um, two.
You have one minute.
My, okay, my thing is, you know, um, that everybody's saying, you know, defund the police and, you know, adopt the people's budget. Yes, I agree with that. Another thing that nobody is not saying that, you know, these cops, you know, I feel like they have, um, mental health issues, whatever. I feel like that mental health is very important than anybody, you know, of anything else. So I would, you know, my suggestion is to have the cops go through a evaluation of mental health because the mental health affecting their job performance on the job itself and the issues that they be having at home, they bring it to the job. So my thing is to adopt the people's budget, you know, defund the police. Um, reform, uh, police reform, and, um, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Caitlin, and I'd like to speak on item number one and give general public comment.
You have one minute.
Okay, uh, so I just want to, um, thank the council people who brought forward, uh, Weston, Martinez, and Harris Dawson's this motion. Um, I want to pass, I want to see that motion passed, and we want to see alternatives to policing. And we want to see the community engage in developing those alternatives, especially the community members who have already worked so hard at developing the people's budget. Uh, call in Black Lives Matter LA, call in Justice LA, call in LA Can, and other grassroots organizations. And, uh, just for general public comment, I just want to emphasize the focus on, uh, we really want to see the police abolished. And defunding is a first step, and that's great, but it feels like an inch when we have miles to go. So we really want to see, um, significant and urgent swift progress on that. And, uh, I also want to emphasize that some of the language is a little bit vague as far as, um, I guess this is really item number two, but the language is a bit vague as far as, uh, policing, um, related to.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, for this hearing, that concludes general public comment. I want to, uh, you know, thank everybody for calling and apologize to those that did not have an opportunity to speak. But I want to assure you, this is the beginning, not the end. We are planning on, on having other opportunities for the community to be engaged in this process. We plan on working directly with the, uh, the organizers of this movement as well. The, this eight AM hearing today was the first time that was available to us, and we wanted to quickly get this, uh, uh, motion moving through the process. So with, uh, uh, that said, that concludes, uh, general public comment. And again, thank everybody for, uh, participating. Uh, before we begin, uh, the conversations, I want to see if any of the members want to chime in right now. I know that Mr. Harris Dawson, uh, had a, um, uh, suggested amendment, which I thought was excellent. Do you want to, let's just jump into that if you're.
Yes, uh, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. And thank you to everybody that, uh, got up at eight in the morning to call and share and, and be a part of this, uh, moment like you. Uh, Mr. Chair, this issue is incredibly, uh, personal. Uh, it is, uh, deeply felt, uh, you know, as recently as January, I got pulled over by LAPD in my own district, uh, and had to have an individual stand over me holding a gun, uh, in their holster, uh, while they asked me to roll down my windows and do a whole host of things and ask me why I had a government car in this part of town. Um, so, uh, this is a, this is a big, big deal for, uh, all of us. Uh, we just celebrated Father's Day, uh, this past weekend, and it gave me occasion to, to recollect my father and his legacy and many of the other men in my family. And I recall that the first and only time as a child that I saw fear, uh, in my dad's eyes was when a police car would roll up behind us. Uh, even though that we'd done nothing wrong, nothing would happen. He would say, everybody in the car be quiet, everybody be still, you know, don't move. And, and you'd have to stay that way until the, you know, police car went somewhere else. Uh, and that's the kind of fear, uh, generations and generations of folks have lived in, uh, and that we have the opportunity to dramatically alter. Uh, so I'm very grateful to the, to the, to the activists, uh, that have done this. I, you know, I just want to, you know, give notice to my colleagues. This is one of the ones that I won't be objective about. Uh, I, I, I won't be here for symbolic measures. Uh, we're going to push as hard as we can for real change, and I look forward to working with everybody, uh, on that. And, uh, thank the chairman, uh, for giving me an opportunity to speak. I just had one suggestion, uh, to add to item number one, and that is that we look at international programs. Um, international responses to, uh, nonviolent, noncriminal, uh, incidents, uh, whether it's Canada, how they deal with DUIs, or in Western Europe, how they deal with mental health cases. Um, I think in, in our country, we've gotten far too accustomed to and addicted to in many cases, uh, an armed response to almost everything. And, uh, there are lots of other ways to approach, uh, these issues, lots more, a lot more efficient ways, uh, a lot more effective ways. And, uh, I want to broaden the scope of what we're looking at beyond programs in the US to, to programs around the world. And so, uh, that's the, uh, that's my suggestion, uh, for today, but, uh, just very eager and energized to be a part of this discussion and, and part of this great moment of change that has, um, that we have the opportunity to be a part of as these activists, uh, of every stripe, um, uh, from every racial group in, in our city and around the world, almost every capital in, in the, the Western world, uh, has stood up and demanded, uh, that changes get made. And they've kicked open a door and, and, uh, I intend with all of you to, to walk through it, uh, and walk through it, uh, to a better future for everybody in Los Angeles and hopefully in the United States.
Well, thank, thank you for saying that. And, uh, you know, I'm with you on that. Uh, let's look at, uh, ways, uh, Mr. Clerk, to incorporate, uh, Mr. Harris Dawson's suggestion. It makes all of the sense in the world. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, you know what, I, you know, I also believe, and I think it's important, I want all my colleagues to know, that I believe that there, there does have to be change. Uh, the, the reason I stood up for the, uh, LAPD, uh, the other week was because I just didn't think that the change that has happened within the LAPD was, has been acknowledged, uh, over the years, that as a police force that we have, you know, we have made strides, that we've had led the nation in making those changes. You know, I agree that we should not have police officers respond to nonviolent mental health issues. Just unfortunately Sacramento, um, they, they don't prioritize this and needs to provide additional funding for these things. I say over and over and over again that so many of the, of our unhoused are suffering from mental health issues. And I don't believe that we adequately address the unhoused, you know, crisis until we, you know, fight for more funding. And so I want, uh, my colleagues to know that I, I too stand with them to, to make real, real change. That I think that this is, this is also an opportunity for us to, uh, reshape and reimagine what, how we respond to, uh, certain nonviolent issues in the, in the city.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, did, uh, Mr., anyone else want to weigh in before we, uh, begin to move on these items? I think I saw Mr. Coretts.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, for convening this critical ad hoc, uh, committee meeting, uh, so we can move forward with important and necessary reforms that hopefully will bring us towards a new day. Uh, I, I agree with Mr. Lee that we've come a long way from our terrible history with the LAPD if you go back far enough. Um, and, uh, even since nineteen ninety-two, um, and, and the unrest then, uh, we've made a lot of progress. The city no longer has a police force that's sixty percent white. It's now thirty percent white. It looks like the rest of the city. Um, but we have a long way to go. And, uh, virtually every black man that I have ever talked with about the subject says exactly what Mr. Harris Dawson has said. That when they're stopped by the police, if they're driving, they're very nervous, they're very careful. They make sure their hands are where they can see them. Uh, they take all the steps to make sure that they don't embroil themselves in an incident of violence. And that's not something I've ever had to think about when I'm stopped by the police. If I, uh, make a, uh, illegal U-turn, which I did about fifteen years ago when I got my last ticket, I never thought twice about the fact that I was stopped. Um, those things have to change. And it's not only a, a, a set of reforms, but we have to change, uh, a culture as well. Um, I support all the reforms on today's agenda. I support more reforms in the future. I have always been an activist and advocate for accountability, especially when it comes to misconduct. And I stand firmly, I believe with all of my colleagues, um, that, that when there are allegations against officers, they need to be thoroughly investigated. We need to be sure that the office of inspector general supports all our efforts and reforms. Um, I'm proud that I've authored or co-authored some of the ones that are before you today. Uh, I think while, um, the same people that want to eliminate the LAPD are skeptical, uh, I think that most of the folks in our community will recognize that these are significant steps forward, and, and they have to be. Um, we have issues that we have to address, but we also have to remember this is not a uniquely LA phenomenon. Um, the folks that want to defund the LAPD make it seem as if it's because they're the LAPD. But these efforts are going on in every major city in the country. Um, and, uh, were the LAPD, um, a better entity in their eyes than they are, they still would be trying to defund them. Um, I think that is a step too far. But changing, uh, some of the areas in which they work, um, I think is something that, uh, uh, while it won't happen instantly, is something that we need to look at seriously and, uh, and implement some changes. Um, I, I, I do look back, though, when we talk about mental health response, um, to an incident when I worked in a different city hall in the city of West Hollywood. And, uh, uh, one of my coworkers, uh, was with, uh, his spouse and a bunch of friends. And, uh, at one point, his spouse, uh, took out a gun, ordered all his friends to leave, and shot him dead. And I don't know what the best response would have been, whether it would have been a mental health worker that might have been able to talk him down or an LAPD officer that might have ordered him to put his gun down or be shot. But neither response happened in time, and my coworker has been dead for many years. So I, I don't think it's a, a snap judgment as to what the better response would be. Um, but it would have to be at a minimum a timely response. And I know right now, uh, when we do have mental health workers, they generally don't come running at three in the morning. So if we are going to replace police with mental health workers, it better be with a system that can mobilize them at every moment, not just nine to five or nine to eight. Um, and that won't be an easy system to set up either, but, uh, we all need to look at these issues. We need to, uh, deal with them thoughtfully and, uh, address them appropriately. If we did what, um, is being asked to do and we defunded the police and in a week they were gone, I think that would be the worst decision the city council has ever made. Um, and I think the city would look, uh, a little bit like the movie The Purge. But I think we can do all this thoughtfully and in a timely fashion and, uh, make the city of Los Angeles a better and safer place.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Do I see Mr. Harris Dawson's?
Yes, I raised my, uh, virtual hand, as they say.
Hey, I gotta get used to the virtual hands, but I see it. So the floor is yours.
I, thank you so much. I just wanted to respond, uh, because I know there's, there's, you know, there's understandable fear and concern about making such, uh, big changes. Uh, but, you know, just as, uh, there are things we don't know how to do, there are things that other people have figured out, like how to have a fully staffed mental health response team that responds twenty-four hours a day and responds in a way where they can deal with the problems. You know, Los Angeles, oddly enough, we have, uh, in our own backyard, uh, pioneered one of the best such, um, response teams. We have the, the, uh, gang, um, our grid program where former gang members are trained and get certified, and they intervene on gang situations. In my district, when there's a shooting at two in the morning, police officers show up for sure, but gang intervention workers show up. They're the ones who go talk to the other side. They're the ones who negotiate. And even LAPD members will tell you, they're one of the main reasons why homicides have gone from fifteen hundred in the early nineties to less than two hundred, uh, in very, very recent years. And so we already have models for that. I think the same thing, uh, about homelessness, uh, in, in the organizations that work with homelessness, they find the best people to work with people who are homeless are not police officers, they're not social workers, they're not mental health workers. They're people who have been homeless, uh, and who've been able to come out of it and receive. They're people who have been homeless and who've been able to come out of it and receive the training and support and pay that they need in order to do that work and to be available 24 hours a day. And so I, you know, I just want to encourage us all to take a very, very hopeful approach. I think, you know, it is, the defund the police folks, I would say in their defense, are, are saying, raising a very legitimate question to us. How is it that the organization that costs you the most in terms of liability, that has had to have a consent decree on it, how is it that even when every other department gets cut, we add money to their budget? We have, anybody who's been five minutes in LA knows, the biggest problem we have is homelessness. We had a budget that cut housing and increased policing. And so I think in, in order for us to have a productive conversation, you know, we just, we, we just got to be, try to be constructive with the folks who are making very radical claims and radical demands on us at this time. Because they're responding to the very, very, very horrifying reality of having to bury people, unarmed people, you know, and right on the border of me and Mr. Wesson's district, we got an office, 125-pound senior citizen African-American woman with a mental health problem, standing 30 feet away from two officers, shot dead. You can, you will never convince me, you will never convince me that that's a necessary way to do business in our community, and that, that in fact keeps us safe. And so, again, I just want to add that to the conversation and, and ask all of us to, to try to see how we can take people's input and use it to build us all up rather than characterize their demands in a way that I, that I think is unachievable and scary and ridiculous.
Thank you for that, Mr. Harris Dawson. Mr. Sadio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very happy to see you this morning. I think this is such a matter that we should not be concerned about what time the meeting is, but that it rises to a level that we should simply do what we have to do when we can. So let me start with that. I share, I, I share the concerns that have been articulated. I don't think, Mr. Harris Dawson, that these are radical ideas. I don't think that's the measure we're looking for, is, are these the best ideas? Are these the smart ideas? Because I think the concerns are legitimate. I'm sorry that happened to you, what you raised, and it's, it's happened to me in abundance of times. And there's no point in going through all our experiences that we've had that have been inappropriate, unfortunate. And we do have to make big changes. In fact, had you been from my community a few years ago, not only would you have been stopped, but you probably would have had your car taken from you. You would have been sat on the side, whether you were with your family or not, and your car would have been taken from you. You would have been fined. The fine would have probably been as much as your car itself. Because just a few years ago, in this city, right down the street from City Hall, it was illegal to drive. This city, this city government told over $100 million, they took, out of the pockets of undocumented motorists. So I, I, it's, it's just, I feel really bad that you got stopped. And I feel really bad for the person who didn't even, couldn't even imagine and think, right, that this was going to go sideways for them. I don't know what they were thinking. But it does demand change, and I've seen the change. In my 50 years of, of being a, an activist, I've seen the changes. Where people, it was illegal to drive, and now we have 1.7 million new motorists. And guess what? The world didn't fall apart. It wasn't a radical decision. It was a smart decision. It was the right decision to do. It was in alignment, right, of our values with what the laws are. And so now 1.7 new motorists exist. Automobile accidents are down, insurance is up. So change can happen. Mr. Wesson, you were part of that change. You gave me an opportunity to have my bill heard, even when it wasn't desired to be heard, even when it was unpopular amongst our own friends. So I think we need to move this discussion forward and talk about the changes that need to be done. I have a concern. I'm glad that, that Mr. Harris Dawson is with us because there is a value in this globalization, and we need to look at it. And I have a motion for some appropriate time, Mr. Chair, to talk about us doing a side-by-side of what are the proposals, what's coming out of the Black Congressional Caucus, what's coming out of the meeting with President Obama? What's, what's happening? What have we done? The decree was mentioned. This is not, you know, the, the Department of the Past. This is not William Parker's Department. This is not Daryl Gates' Department. I grew up in that department and was familiar with it. But this is another department that comes off the decree, comes off the leadership of Bill Bratton, comes off the leadership of Charlie Gray, and puts us in a position where we have the most homicides since 1962. Puts us in a position where the people engaged in these policies at least look like us. 53% of the officers are Latino. 50% of the 12,000 people that work for LAPD are Mexican, Mexican-American, Chicano, Latino. That's dramatically different from the, from the police department that I grew up, that I was familiar with, intimately familiar with as a young person. So yes, it's important for us to look globally, look within the, the nation. Because globally, the trend, Mr. Harris Dawson knows, is, is towards privatization. And so what we have globally, we may have, it may look one way in Europe, but I tell you what, how it looks in Latin America. And it may look like that here in Bel Air and Brentwood and, and other communities. Is, it looks more like apartheid in some respects. It looks like privatized police forces in Santa Fe, a new hip community in Mexico City. And so there's privatization at one level. There's a police force that's vulnerable to corruption. There's narco traffickers. There are people in my district who come here, believe it or not, because they want to live in a community where there is a police force. So it's not to absolve anybody, but it's to recognize the realities. That if you're fleeing MS-13 or the SE-8, if you're fleeing narco traffickers, if a man kills your husband and shoots him, shoots him in the head right in front of you, and then puts a gun to his, to his daughter and says, and tells the mother, I want you to carry drugs for me. They covet what we are criticizing. And so we need to be very critical and thoughtful about how we move forward. It's not right or left. This is about what's the right, what's the correct way to go forward? So that we have the right balance. I agree with you. I don't understand, but I, no, it makes sense if you think about it. There's a lot of people who call in there for fights. How is it that the LAPD is so involved in homeless services? Because a lot of people don't understand the forms of government that we have here. The demands that call for us to suggest that we give our money to mental health, don't understand that the mental health department is part of the county, not the city of Los Angeles. When they demand that we put the money in education, don't understand that the school department has its own eight-plus billion dollars to spend on education. So when initially we were addressing this, there were silos of government that didn't interface. Mr. Wesson, you remember when I was working with the county unions? There would be a discussion about cuts to the county budget, layoffs, thousands of people who were going to be made unemployed. And I would have to walk to the city of Los Angeles, and they were oblivious to this, even though these were going to be city residents who were going to be unemployed. And so what happened before is that there were these silos. And so when the city started addressing the question of homelessness, amongst many of its attempts to address the question, they only looked to their toolbox, and they didn't look to the other toolboxes. And what's in their toolbox? LAPD. And so that's how that expanded, and we started spending over $100 million. You remember the beginning of this discussion, Mr. Wesson, that we were spending over $100 million, but we were funding LAPD to deal with questions of homelessness? I don't understand. I mean, I know how we got there. But we don't need to continue to go forward this way. We need to figure out how, and that's why I support all these motions, to figure out how to construct and redesign the relationship with LAPD and the people of Los Angeles. We need to make sure that the job of a police officer is the job of a police officer and not of a social worker. Who's the appropriate person to go to this site? Who's the appropriate person to get this phone call? But I want to make sure that that phone call, you know, some people accuse, accuse me of being pro-union, and I'll have to, to admit to that, Mr. President or Mr. Chairman. But I want that person to be a 911 officer who works for the city of Los Angeles, who's a committed public servant, not some person in a call center in Nebraska, or in Latin America, or in India or some other place. But we have to redesign the way that we do this. Because if we're putting the wrong person in, in the, in the spot, how do we expect them to do that job? That's not their job. That's not what they were trained for. And so I'm excited about this. I look forward to us doing the, well, this is the Committee of Reform. I look forward to us doing the reforms that we need and doing the redesign and making sure that we have people doing the right job and that they're in the right place and that we are utilizing our resources. GRID is one of the programs. That's an excellent program. We've talked about it. We've talked about, we did talk about CERT, our Crisis Response Teams, who go out there and respond at households throughout all hours of the day. We need to look at expanding them, professionalizing them. We need to figure out, where, what departments do these people go in? Maybe they should go in the new Human and Civil Rights Department. That might be the area where we need them to be. So that's another consideration. So we've got a lot of work in, in front of us. We need to approach these in a very realistic manner and look for what is the correct way to go forward. What is the way that will serve all the people? And I know this is going to offend a lot of people who call in. But for all the people who call in, and we listen to them, there are still others who don't call in who don't agree with them. And we have to respond to them also. We have to serve and represent them also. And so, Mr. Pres-, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for this time. I look forward to going forward with this committee, the richness of the experiences of those who are part of this committee. And I think we're going to move the city forward. I thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I want to thank all of the members for participating in this morning's hearing. And again, all of the individuals that called in. But I just want to make it crystal clear where it relates to me in my brain, that time is now. We are not asking for a report back from our staff. We want them to come back with a plan. You know, I understand that to some of the other members on this committee, that this even makes you feel a little uncomfortable. Well, welcome to being black, okay? Welcome to being uncomfortable. Welcome to having to live a different life. So we're going to move this. We're going to get something done. There is a way, if we are committed and we work together and we deal with facts and we lay this out, that we can change this world. I believe that. I'm going to be a part of it. And I understand that it's going to be uncomfortable, but it's always uncomfortable in the beginning. So with that said, Mr. Clerk, before us, unless there's an objection, I'm going to recommend that on items one through five, seven and eight, that we adopt those motions as amended. And that item, item number six, we will adopt the motion as amended as well. So without objection, these items will be deemed approved.
Mr. Chair, shall I take a roll call for the vote?
Would you please?
Very well. Councilmember Wesson?
Aye.
Councilmember Coretts?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Sadio?
Sadio, aye.
Councilmember Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Very good.
That's everybody? Okay. Well, with that said, Mr. Clerk, is there any more items before this committee? Okay, then this committee is adjourned. See you folks in about 20 minutes or so.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I have a verbal motion.
Okay, Mr. Sadio?
Yes, I'm asking for a comprehensive report back on all congressional, state and reform bills. I'd like us to do a side-by-side comparison of policy and funding and compare that to the city policy so that we can see where are the areas that other people who are thinking about the subject matter can, where we can share those ideas or where we can take their ideas and implement them.
Well, you know what, Mr. Sadio, you should introduce that in, in council in the next 20 minutes.
Yes, that sounds like a great idea. I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman.
I just think that's the, the more appropriate. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you.
I gotta get used to looking at these hands, guys. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, I have a verbal amendment to item number six. I think I got crossed up, and maybe we voted on that. And I didn't do it. It's a minor thing. But it adds the instruction, adds an instruction to ask the CAO and CLA to look into funds to support the report and specifically look at the liability claims account.
Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, can we quickly, without objection, we're going to reconsider item six? For an amendment, and Mr. Harris Dawson, in, on, we now have item six before us. If you would reiterate your amendment.
So this amendment adds, an instruction to ask the CL, CAO and CLA to look into funds with specific attention to the liability claims account to support the after-action report.
Okay, so without objection, where it relates to item six, we'll adopt as amended and amended. Okay, there's no more business before this committee. This committee's adjourned.